I'll call to order at 7:01 this special joint meeting of the Tolland Town Council and the Tolland Water Commission on Monday, March 7th, 2022. Just want to thank Connecticut Water and the Water Commission for joining us for this meeting. As was in the past on the 28th, I do, due to personal reasons and in the advice of the town attorney, have to recuse myself from the discussion. So Vice Chair John Regan will be taking over. I will have my microphone muted and camera off, however, I will be around or in the area. So once discussions and any resolution votes have been concluded, you can reach out to me via text to let me know to join back in for adjournment. Otherwise, during the deliberations, I request councilors do not reach out privately unless there is an urgent matter. So with that being said, thank you, Vice Chair Regan, for taking over and have a great discussion and joint meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That brings us to item number two of our agenda tonight, discussing water study and the well water issue area and loan application. Lisa, if you could educate us on this, please?
Sure. So just a little background on this project for what happened this evening. A while back, Department of Public Health and Connecticut Water were contacting regarding concerns in the vineyard area with well water concerns. Connecticut Water was asked by the town council to provide an analysis extending the existing water main to this area. In order to address the costs associated with the water extension, we reached out to the Department of Public Health to determine potential sources of funding. We were advised that the drinking water state revolving fund, we were advised of that fund. This program takes project applications until March 31st of this year. So according to Lori Matthew of the Department of Public Health branch chief, it's a chance for Tolland to be placed on the DPH drinking water state revolving fund project priority list for this year's intended use plan. In order to apply, the town water commission must be authorized by the town council to make the project application. The application process has been accelerated due to the potential funding that could be made available from the federal government for the infrastructure as well as the revolving water drinking water fund. The application does not commit the town to proceed with the project. They will assist us in determining how much funds will be available through a loan program and how much would be available through a loan forgiveness program actively applied, which is much like a grant, they call it a loan forgiveness program. This is subject to consideration of the Department of Public Health after they go through all the pieces of the application. Once we receive the results of the award, the town council and the water commission will then need to decide how you want to move forward or not move forward with the project. So that's just a little bit of the background of where we're at with this particular project. Some of the water commission considerations, if it's approved, the water commission regulations that guide the residents of, how the residents of the area will be impacted on any portion of the expense that is not covered by the loan forgiveness. The regulations require an assessment to be put on the properties for the length of the line. So from where the line starts all the way to the whole vineyard area where it's served, our water regulations would require that each and every one of those properties along the way would be assessed for the portion of the funds that are not covered by any sort of grants or loan forgiveness. That's just the regs that are out there. There will also be other application costs for those who connect or move forward to connecting each private property to the new water line, and each homeowner would have to pay those costs as well. The regulations require that any resident along the new water line must be assessed proportionately for the expense of the water line extension, whether they do or do not decide to connect. There's some other considerations as I started to talk about was if residents do decide to connect, they will also have to pay for a licensed well driller to abandon the existing well. This is part of the Connecticut Department of Health rules. Will not have these amounts until the project costs are finalized. However, they could be substantial if the town does not receive a large amount for the loan forgiveness program. So, you know, on top of what it costs for those who would connect to the system, from the road to their house, that's all project and cost of the individuals would have to pay as well as the application fee and then the assessment on the property if there's not sufficient funds through grants to cover the whole thing. If the town council decides to assume the loan portion, then what would happen with that is it would basically pass through the middle grade calculation. So then every taxpayer in the town would be paying for this one particular area. That's it. The town council said, all right, we're not going to check, we're going to pick up the debt as part of the town. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear and aware of either way, either the citizens that are being served directly will have to pay an assessment, or if the town decides, the town council decides not to do that, then it has to be paid for some way somehow. If there's no grants or anything, that's how it would happen. There could be concerns with other citizens in the town having done that way, but I'm just telling you what some of your options might be and if you even get to that. There could be potentially costs that are not included in this assessment that was provided to us this evening. We're going to have Craig Patlock from Connecticut Water go over his study and assessment of what he did, and there could be some other costs that are not included in those numbers. And those are things like fire hydrants, I think it's like every thousand feet or so you have to have a fire hydrant along a water route, you would have, you have to install a pump station. In order to install a pump station, you would either have to get easements to properties or land acquisition to put that pump station on, and you definitely will need a pump station to pull the water through. And then there could be additional soft plus attorneys fees, engineering things that may come up. And after all of that, we would have to go to PIRA to try to get our diversion permit increased to allow for us to be able to pump more gallons through our system. So that's some of the considerations. I just want to share some of my own personal concerns and certainly everyone else can as well. I certainly support everybody having potable water within the town. I have no grievance with that, but one of my concerns is, you know, we are only in this particular project addressing one particular area of town. There could be other areas of the town and with well water concerns, and we may have to address those in the future if any of those arise after this one. So those are some of the things that we need to think about when moving forward with this to make sure that, you know, if you're doing it for one area, you may have to consider other areas as well if they should arise. And the other concern I see is with a project, the magnitude of this particular project, the staff that we have in-house would not be able to manage something as large as this particular project. The loan application and any sort of loan forgiveness program would require us to have certain things that we have to do, like we have to buy American, you have to inventory everything, every pipe that's being purchased, every, every item that is being purchased for this job, we would have to ensure, ensure that it's all by American. That's, that's the requirements of this program. So there's things like that where we would need somebody to be able to monitor all that and make sure that the reporting would be in place. There's certain things we can do internally regarding the record keeping and paying the bills and managing the dollar amounts and do some of the drawdowns. The application is intensive and I could, you know, see us working together with Connecticut Water to put that application together for us if that's how we decide to proceed this evening. But there would definitely be some things that we'll need help with to make that happen. So at this point, unless you have any questions about what I've talked about so far, I'd like to turn it over to Craig Patlock from Connecticut Water to discuss the program, his analysis.
Thank you, Lisa. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, I think I'm going to introduce our, my, our technical staff here who really went through the, the process of analyzing the water main extension, and that'll be David Peeling, our director of engineering, and Santiago, Santiago Bolas, who is the primary engineer in, in this effort. But first, I think it's important to maybe highlight the relationship as well, Lisa, because this, this project is somewhat unique in that it's not an extension of the Connecticut Water Company system in the town of Tolland. It's an extension of the Tolland Water Commission system, and Connecticut Water is an agent of the Tolland Water Commission as its certified operator. So it's in that capacity that we prepared this and, and analyzed, analyzed the various options. It's important to know that this would be part of the Tolland Water Commission's system. Tolland is somewhat unique in that you do have both Connecticut Water Company and Tolland Water within the boundaries of the town. So I just think for the, for the purpose of, of the council here, it's important to understand that, that difference as well. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to David Peeling and Santiago.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Santiago Bolas. I'm the engineer who primarily took the role of analyzing these options for the town and seeing what was viable and what was, in a way, you know, feasible as far as the engineering and the options there. So maybe what I'll do is I'll just describe the two options that were laid out and talk about the cost associated with them. It's pros and cons. So without further delay, the option one was basically to extend a water main from the intersection of Old, I'm sorry, I forget the names of the roads, but I have them here. Just give me one second. This is at the intersection of Old Stafford Road and Chatter Road, and this is option one, and it's on the northern side of, of the, of the marsh area that we have there in the map. So basically, we would be extending over to arrive to the vineyards from the north and extend to Above Cap Road from, from the north toward Charternay Lane. So this option is basically, and I'm going to pull up the map here, just allow me a second.
Share the map to your screen.
I'm actually looking here at my own map, so never mind that. So this is about 8,130 linear feet of main, and we see that past, you know, before we get to Above Cap Road, it's a pretty steep uphill section there on Slater Road, which means that hydraulically we're, we would have to pump the water in order to get it to Above Cap Road and then to the vineyards. Again, this is a, an elevation change of about 187 feet, so that means we, we do need a pump station somewhere on Slater Road for that option. And maybe I'm going to switch back to some of the pros and cons. So this is the shortest distance of the two options, and it also shows that this would be the lowest cost of the two. And also, this is on town roads, and this is important because construction on town roads is significantly, significantly less expensive than state roads. And also, there is no particularly significant crossing, so there's no rivers or difficulties as far as infrastructure that we have to plan for. Again, this is the, the lower cost option, and it comes down to about 10, 10 and a half million dollars. Maybe with that being said, maybe we look at option two. Option two is a longer extension at about 12,500 linear feet, and this option is on Tolland, Tolland Stage Road. So basically, if you look at the map that you're showing there, on that Escanamo Road, there is a, there is a facility that we currently serve right where the cursor is, and the connection point would be there and would go east toward North River Road, and that would be basically the lower point in the extension would be near that intersection of Tolland Stage Road and North River Road. From that intersection on going north on Above Cap Road, that's an uphill stretch of road, and that basically results in the requirement of a pump station to move the water uphill. So option two has a couple of difficulties there. There's a bridge before you get to North River Road. The extension is again a longer extension and, and a pump station would be required. So this option comes at about 13.6 million dollars, and it's, although it's similar in, in, you know, the, the general constructability of it, the cost would be higher mainly because of the, maybe because Tolland Stage Road is a state road, and the cost to install on a, on a state road is, is more expensive. For either option one or two, this would be an interconnect to, I'd rather say, the water source would be mainly from the Torrey Road interconnect with the Connecticut Water system, basically meaning that the flow would be provided by Connecticut Water to supplement the demand at the vineyards. Now, these options, as you can see, both include the, the cost of extending the water mains at the vineyards. So both options have a $4.9 million line item. That's what it would cost to extend the water main within the different roads called the Some assumptions, again, the daily water demand is set at an EPA 82 gallon per person per day, so we're making some assumptions as, as far as average daily demand and peak demands. We would recommend, of course, enough flow to protect for fire, so meeting the 500 to 999 gallon per minute requirement in order to achieve an ISO classification B. And as Craig alluded to, the, the cost of, or maybe this was the, the town manager who alluded to, there's the cost of the, of the service connections from the water main to each house is not included in the cost estimation that we provided here. So that would be an additional cost that would, would need to be considered by the residents, and, and that would be typically included in the, in the, in the subsidies offered in, by the DPH unless this is requested upfront. So just be mindful of that. And I think that really concludes the, the two options we have. I'll open it up for questions or unless, David, you want to add anything to this?
No, Santiago, that was a very good summary. I think the, the only two things I would mention are first, the, the costs are based on recent bid pricing we've seen for both state projects and town projects. Those are current numbers as large as they appear, that, that is accurate, and we do not feel overly conservative on that, especially given current supply chain issues and, and inflation issues. And the second point, I just wanted to mention that option two, since it's higher cost, you might think that, why would that even be something we, we offer up as an option? The reason we have that in there is partly there's an advantage associated with this route where you could potentially serve the police barracks and the Ivy Woods apartment complex. Those are separate public water supplies at this point, and DPH and DEEP will award funding based on a scoring criteria for the project, and picking up those additional water systems is a way to achieve some additional point scores. And also, you have some additional customers you could, or residents along this route who would be sharing the cost, so that could have some potential benefit. That's the reason we, we included those, but otherwise Santiago hit all the high notes for you.
That was good. Thank you, Dave. I think that really concludes my, my description of the two options, and maybe with that being said, I'll pass it back to Ms. Hank.
Yes, Beverly has a question for you.
On option number two, no, number one, you're going to go down Charter Road, correct? To bring the water?
Yes, let me, I think we already have a, a water main on Charter Road. Let me see the map here.
Dirt Road, is the price included upsizing the main?
So the, the cost estimate doesn't include upsizing the main on Chatter Road. It would, is under the assumption that we would tie into the end of the existing water main, which is a six inch water main. So that, that can create some limitations as far as the available flow, but the cost estimate does not include replacing the water main on Chatter Road.
Is there also Beverly?
So the price starts at the water end of that line?
Yeah. It's not a readout of the old line. It's, it's.
It's extending, it's right, it's extending to six inch instead of. So this is six inch? Santiago?
That is correct. I, I, that is a, a Tolland Water main, and the records show it's a six inch.
Here. Would that have to be, is that what you meant?
Yeah, I'm asking this.
Would this have to be increased to a higher pipe size, a larger pipe size?
For the current analysis we have, it does not include upsizing that. I think that, that could be further investigated, but to this point it is not.
The limitation with the six inch will be the fire flow availability, and as you're pushing a large volume through there, you'll have more head losses through that six inch stretch, which ultimately will diminish the fire flow available. But we didn't feel like that factor alone was worth the additional length of main to upsize here, at least for this stage of analysis.
Did you guys look at, and I'm not an advocate for this, but we should at least say we looked at the cost of it. You moved the map down a little further? Okay, stop. Well, that 84 is, is right where that number is, that's our line on A Berry of the pump system that we have, not using CWC's water.
Our well.
Our well. So is there a huge cost of going under 84? Looks like a heck of a lot less pipe. You'd hook in Sandy and Amy and the police, and the police station, but you would have to go under 84 or down to Route 74, which is also not a lot of far. Is it something you guys even looked at or you just someone across interstate?
So we, we didn't extend much of the investigation to that for a couple of reasons. One being that going under the highways particularly challenging as far as permits go, and it would only be possible by either a directional drill installation or a jack and bore, and both of those tend to be pretty expensive. In addition to that, you would need to possibly get easements on either side and/or buy, acquire land in order to do that. So we figure for the, for the time you have and for the purpose of giving you a cost estimation that is representative of our experience, the option one and two were the better ones.
Thank you. Santiago, I have a, I have a question regarding your, your experience with, you said that with DPH that they have a scoring system and that if you, there's certain things they look at. If we were going to choose option two, which would include the possibility for tying in for these other, other properties as opposed to just cutting around on option one, do you think that would be, that would possibly enhance our scoring for, for the DPH funding or further outside funding?
I think the short answer to that is yes. Anytime that there is more people to be served and, and/or other public systems that may have issues to be fixed, they will score that application higher. So I know for, for instance, in the case of Ivy, Ivy Woods Apartments, they had some violations in their system. However, they, they fixed those problems they had, so I don't know how the Department of Health would, would basically incorporate that into their scoring aspect. Do you have anything to add to that, Craig? Maybe you have some experience on that side of things?
I really don't, Santiago. I mean, what you said is in fact true. Now, I don't know specifically what scoring that would add, other than to say that it would, it would likely better the score for consideration. I don't think that it would offset costs by any means. You know, obviously, it's significantly cheaper to go option two. I mean, option one, I'm sorry. I don't think, I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference.
I think that's correct. The, this will just rank order projects, so having more points gets you a little higher in the ranking, not necessarily any higher funding amount. I don't know what the contamination issue is in the vineyards, if it's limited to sodium and chloride, if, or if there are other contaminants. You do pick up points for serving private wells with contaminants, but you would pick up a good amount of additional points for consolidating public water supplies, but you would be bearing extra costs to get those points because of that added different, that distance under option two. I don't know if, it's hard to say if it's a difference maker until you knew what the full slate of projects are that are submitted and how DPH is evaluating them, so it's purely a guess. So it's purely a guess.
Thank you.
Craig, are both of our options, I mean, we'd be purchasing water from Connecticut Water, correct? It won't come off our well system, right?
That is correct, yes. Hydraulically, the, both options need mainly from the interconnect, from the Torrey Road interconnect, which means that yes, Connecticut Water would be supplying the additional demand.
So just so everybody understands, these people are hooking up, but they're paying Connecticut, well, rate that Connecticut Water charges us plus a markup. So for every gallon they use, once they have water, that's a gallon, so. And probably be a higher rate for the Torrey Road system, there's going to be more assets on the line as a pumping station. So we'll probably have to go to DPH for the, for the raise here.
Is there any option that we have to carry on the Connecticut Water or any other?
Well, the one I talked about, we can hook up to our system. We have to go on the highway or down through seventy four. Our system is a lot cheaper because we're not profit. So they pay lower rates, but I don't know what the cost needs to go. First thing, we're, you know, our wells will be pumping a lot more water and we probably have to go for a, the verse permit increase.
When I looked at that area, I just had a difficulty finding, unless you get an easement on someone's property, to be able to go through your yard with the order line.
I mean, there's issues with it, it's going to be a lot less pipe. I don't know what the net cost difference is, but, but the rate per gallon, the people that pay the cheaper thing.
Not forever. So if we go through seventy four, it'll, if we go Charter Road, it's Connecticut Water? Seventy four is tall on water, so.
Yeah, well, if you use Route seventy, if you use, you're talking about Route seventy four crossing at Wellington and go that way to serve here, you have a bridge crossing and it's.
I don't think this is down the bridge.
Right, where the marker is right there, where, where it says Route eighty four.
Yeah.
That's our water main.
What about over at, where the winding road? And this one come up there, the orange there?
That's all, that's all that door. That's all, that's water from our room, Connecticut Water, still tall on water, permission will be by now or so.
Yeah, so either is.
That's where I matter for well water anyways.
It's a whole iteration.
If I might, just think, in, in all due respect, the options, if you're going to build something, are constrained a lot by where streets are and what's already in the ground. The Charter Road water main was built by the town council years ago when they weren't, as, as a consequence of the issue for don't, don't bleach a contamination. It was long before there was water, even a dream of a water mission. And I think it was, not speaking disrespectfully, but it was kind of tossed in the ground to get rid of the problem. I know you can criticize it, well, only a six inch water main. Well, it was only a few dozen houses. And the council perhaps was unconcerned about that. The fact of the matter is where the person is right now, that's, there are hundreds of acres of state owned property in this whole area, including a lot of seven four, and there's town owned fixed properties too. So putting pipe in the ground, that is not going to have customers on. The numbers, just to give you something to think about. The Slater Road option, if you just look at the fixed costs without any overruns or anything else, and the hundred and sixteen houses in the vineyards, you're over ninety thousand dollars per dwelling unit to provide service. Use the other option and it's over a hundred and seventeen thousand for dwelling unit. If people don't hook up, those numbers get worse and worse and worse.
Right, so if you assume fifty percent gets forgiven, you're still talking fifty thousand dollars a house. And that's only the lien you put on the property. All the people on Slater Road may be happy with their water. And they never hook up. You gotta decide who eats that cost. Because we've assessed the property, we're never going to get the cash until people hook up.
Is that the assumption though on the full of ten million or fifteen million? That's the assumption on the full ten million or thirteen million, correct?
His was on the full amount. That's why he said it's, if we get, if we get half forgiven, it's still going to be about fifty thousand, fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
The thing you also need to remember, it's important, the accounting for this, even if you get half of it back in a grant, we're going to have to depreciate the ten or the thirteen million dollars because you have to provide for capital recovery. At the end of life of those water lines, you've got to have a depreciation reserve to build it all over again. So it's, it's good from the standpoint if you get a grant. But still, these are very expensive assets and on the course of the water system, the way your water system is operated, it's still going to be a ten to thirteen million dollar system. The pipes will depreciate over sixty years. You can kind of do the math if it intrigues you. When you get involved in pumps and backup generators to run the pump station if there's no electricity, that is much shorter life plans. And the, I'll keep constant appreciation on that stuff.
Let me, nobody liked my option three. Will, will like, will like my option four less? And, and the state won't like option four at all. Is there a place anywhere near there, and whether it's town land or other land that's higher up that we could drill a well, a community well? I think the state doesn't like new community wells. But if the option is paying thirteen million dollars versus drilling a well in an area that we think is clean, we run a lot less pipe.
Would you guys want a well?
We want a well. We're going to run this anyway.
My concern.
I, I think the state's very concerned with, with small operating systems.
They are, and we have the one, the community well over by Willie that is really an issue. And it's a, there's legislation out there now to actually get rid of the community well to have them be acquired by Connecticut Water or whoever, because there's just such disparity in how they're cared for. So my concern honestly, with a community well in that area, is we know that there's a lot of contamination in that area. So I'm concerned about that for being contaminated. And if we dig a well and it's just as contaminated, we've just sunk the money into a community well without having assurances that the water's clean or that it's going to take.
Do we have testing information on where the dozen or two dozen wells here? There's got, there's a lot of water wells in the couple of square miles we talked about. And our, I thought DEEP was doing some kind of a study. I have, we've only been involved in this since late last year. We don't know what's been explored, what's been discussed a year ago or a year and a half ago. But is there a knowledge of water wells in this area where you have different, better results?
Well, so from where DEEP is right now, they're supposed to have the, the report back to us by the end of the month, but I'm not holding my breath.
Yeah, and that's not helping us with the conversation.
No, it's not. And to be honest with you, that information is going to be based off of the areas and the homes that have contamination. They're not looking at testing other wells outside of that. And I'm going to be a hundred percent frank here, depending on when they come back, the town's probably going to have some liability regardless. Okay, so even if it's a eighty, twenty, fifty, fifty, forty, and however you want to look at the split, part of the contamination, from what I'm hearing from DEEP, is going to be because of rock salt and part of it may be something else. They're looking at all kinds of different things. If they come back saying the town has any liability in this, then we're, this conversation is irrelevant because the town has liabilities.
But has the town officially been notified of any of those things?
The DEEP study is coming out at the end of the month.
So no, town has not yet been notified? Okay.
But at the same time, this, all we're talking about is discussing about.
Right.
Yeah, exploring the possibilities.
The possibility of grant.
I mean, it's not even, it's, we're not, we're not obligating ourselves to anything. It's, it's basically to see, okay, these are the options here before us. And that we're going to take a look at this and say, yes, we'd like to go forward with at least exploring a possible way for funding.
Right.
I mean, that's, I, I mean, for me, I think this is really sort of a no brainer. Where we, it's not, it's not, we're not obliging ourselves to do anything. I mean, you know, we're just saying, hey, let's see if there's funding out there based upon whatever, whichever option we want, because that really dictates which way we're going to go. So I mean, I, I really, I, I really see that this is something that is, I appreciate the information, but I think this is an easy vote for me.
I think we're trying to solve the problem of going to get the information, right? So at this point, what we're trying to do is put in, is put in the grant to see what kind of funding we can get for this project. Me personally, I'm sorry, it's not a grant, it's the thing for kids. So, right. I, I prefer option two because I think moving in Ivy Woods there, it's an apartment complex from an equity perspective, that area there, there are issues that loops in them. And I'm a little concerned because I, I wasn't sure, I thought we might catch more homes if we get option two, but it sounds like we would catch more homes if we did option one. Is that what I'm?
Twenty, twenty, twenty home districts. There's fifty four on one, fifty two on one, and seventy four on the other.
Okay, so.
More vacant land too.
Right. So my preference is option two because we moved in Ivy Woods at that point. And as a side note, I had a, I sent an email to the town council, I met with Commissioner Mark Bowden, and we're looking at putting legislation.
I'm sorry, well, well. Point of order, we don't have that confirmed.
This, you do, actually, it was in the email.
So can we put that up on the screen if we're going to refer to things that weren't in the packet? I mean, this is a special meeting.
It's in the packet?
It, no, it's in the email. I sent everybody an email. But either way, we're looking at the possibility of the funding.
Give me a minute.
Well, well, we've made, we've made a reason before where if it's something we're discussing, they can add it into the minutes for that to resume at a later point. And so I think that as far as point of order for that. But I think as far as bringing up a point of order, the point of order is that we briefly discussed these issues in other town council meetings, where if it's something that is not, that we don't have immediately available or being discussed, we'll be adding in to the minutes at a later point in time, that is voted on and acted upon by the town council. So I think that, you know, if you're going to put a, a point of order, we've already decided that if.
I'm sorry, Louie, you don't get the side on my point of order. Thank you very much for your.
So John, you didn't get the side on the point of order as?
Yeah. Uh, if, if we can get that up here, I think.
I can't. I, I'm not linked into the town.
What do you want?
An email that I sent to the town council, so about a meeting with Director Bowden and new legislation that we've been putting into our small wells grant funding.
I also think we're, we're probably getting a little bit down the scope of why we're here, because if you read the last sentence of the resolution, all we're doing is we're, we're authorizing a grant, right? A loan application. And, and if it's approved, then it comes back to the town council.
To decide if they want to move forward.
Exactly.
Correct. And it's like send the other legislation at that.
Oh, we have to agree if it's a ten million application or thirteen million.
Right.
There's nothing, I think that's the only. Yeah. Plus the bond council, plus lawyers and.
I think the main point is it's just to figure out exactly if we want to move forward with the grant application, which will then tell us what funding is available at that point.
I agree. I'll call you.
Sorry, thank you. I have a bunch of questions, you know, we're just pre-fall, so. First, I, you know, I feel bad for the people that have a lot of issues. I've been, Sammy, Katie, no, I've been tossed in the internet, it makes my stomach a little bit, but anyways, so I think you've answered some of these questions we set up already, but how many homes in the town currently have contaminant water? Not just the vineyards, I mean, just this, but I mean, like you said earlier, when there's more homes, they're only helping certain group. It kind of makes me nervous that we don't have a long term plan for.
There's all the different numbers that are out there. When I looked at the. Okay, from, from what I was looking at, and Beverly, please correct me if I'm.
I'm sorry, I can hear you.
I, what I saw was that there were nine households in the vineyard reporting issues at this time. Does that sound about right?
No.
Thirteen other locations. Then there were sixty people on another list in various areas of the town. It wasn't just the vineyards. So what has been reported to, to us? Now, if anyone has different information, the, the list I saw today had that many.
So the list that I had was the one that your office has had from Department of Eastern Highland District. But Heidi, Heidi, I'm sorry, Holly has said that some people didn't want their name on a list, on a publish list. So I, I don't know the difference. I think Eastern Highland Health District could probably answer that question.
So, you know, we really can't tell you how many because, again, there's some people who don't want that for various reasons.
But we do know there's.
There are some.
The town, I mentioned earlier, that the hostages have to help in somebody else, and when somebody else has a problem.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, like I said, my other concern is there are other areas of town that we've heard some complaints about. And it's not the same location. And if, if those get to a point where they're pretty bad, where it's not tolerable, not tolerable, whatever, they may come forward to the town council as well. And again, you know, just, I'm just giving you a clue for thought. If, if that happens, then you're going to have to think about how will you respond to that as well, or not respond. But that's something to think about when, when you're doing this is.
Is, is it possible to ask Craig a question?
Sure.
If they have their own water line and part of the town too that they service. Are we, is that part line eligible for future funding, like if it's in a couple of years? Craig, can, can your water company apply for this funding?
You're on mute, Craig.
Yeah, I, I, I was only thinking. Yeah, so just for, for purposes of education, the, the reason why this project is coming forward now is because there's the potential for infrastructure money to flow to the state of Connecticut in, in order of magnitude of about four hundred and fifty five million dollars designated for drinking water projects. From that four hundred and fifty five million will be the fifty percent subsidies for projects like this. The, that four hundred and fifty five million will be distributed over a five year period. So take the four fifty five divided by five, and that's how the money will be distributed. So there will be ample opportunities to, to submit for other projects, if the town so chose, or work with us to extend water to another segment of town. So, so yes, I mean, this, this is here, and, and I should also say that just because you submit an application this year does not mean that you need to submit applications in subsequent years for that next tranche of money. It, it, you, once you are on the list, you are on the list and so your project is.
Can Connecticut Water make an application on your side of the fence?
We, we can, Beverly, but the regulatory construct is somewhat restricting in our ability to fund projects of extension. It's by pure rules, it would need to be tied to a guarantee plan based in revenues so that there's not a subsidization by our existing customer base. But it's, it's not to say that we can't do it, we can. It's, it's a little bit more onerous in that we do need to get pure approval for each, each project that we, that is submitted under our name. And that, again, puts it into a, you know, a, a thumbs up or thumbs down scenario with another regulatory agency.
That's a key point, the reason we're talking about this grant now is because this is an extension of the Tolland Water, not Connecticut Water. Connecticut Water with, the other two areas in town that have contamination are serviced by Connecticut Water. So that would be a totally different process to handle those homes that are contaminated over there than this section, which is serviced by Tolland Water. Which has a better F, better chance of getting a grant because it's a small water company.
I just ask because some of the houses I've seen are on their side of the fence, so I wonder how do you service those houses?
And this one's actually to Leslie, our wonderful.
Is she on?
Yes, she is, there she is.
Hey, Leslie, how are you? Um, do you know how much roughly the total project cost would be of this application process?
You're, you're on mute, Leslie.
I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Vice Chair, we do not have an estimated project cost at this point. All we have is the projected cost for the installation of the mains. There's some considerations in terms of engineering and all those things that uh, that the town just does not have the leverage for in terms of uh, project oversight. So um, it's hard to determine at this point total project cost aside from what's been provided for us by Connecticut Water.
Okay, um, can I keep going, John, or? I know it's, so these, oh, for you both. So on page eight, forty dash four. Things, when you read it, it seems like the Tolland Commission, Water Commission service can go for something like this and it's not really the council. Forty, it's page eight, forty-eight dash four. Like, operation, it's uh.
It's forty-eight dash four.
Yes, I think it's the, the property, the property is required.
Or here's some?
That's somewhere, I can't really see that well, in there then.
How's that?
It says and shall have full authority jurisdiction over. And then it says said commission shall have the authority to enter contracts with that town, Tolland. So I, is that just, does that mean? Water Commission actually gets to say that this, that we need this, or is it actually the council?
The. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the side from what the council needs to approve. If it's committing to any sort of debt for the town, whether it's the Water Commission, sort of WPCA, general government. Anything in that um, sort of thing, anything requiring debt must be approved by the town council. And this would be debt. As far as moving forward with the application, it's the Tolland Water Commission that must file the application.
On this one, uh, and I think you know, Lisa, in, in the past, when we were contemplating the big deal. It was brought to the town hall because we thought it was a big deal. Uh, we, some years ago, contemplating, contemplating the habilitation of the tank.
Right.
And it was this grant program, not with federal money. And ultimately, the decision was made to not go forward. For a number of reasons, and we didn't, well, at some other point in time.
You actually put a placeholder in the capital budget, if you remember years ago.
Right, but I never had the debt authorization, but it was by the council.
Well, actually, when I talked to the town manager at the time, it, he pointed out to me that it would affect the coverage ratios of all the debt. And it was worrisome to him, he didn't say stop, but he said it wasn't the Water Commission's debt, it was the town's debt. And that it had to be fact, yeah.
Right.
Again, we pulled the plug on it because it wasn't the right project at the right time. And, and life went on. Actually, it got mired in a build versus rehab. And the, it, it wasn't worth it, because then in the end, the build only looked like it was cheaper than, yeah. No settle.
So the codes, I have to admit, are a little confusing, there are like three or four places, we were working on the vitamin one place. They're also somewhat confusing because the town council used to be the entity, there used to be the Water Commission. And just in little sections, you'll see it's a town, it's a Water Commission, but it, it didn't always go back to that. So sometimes it looks like it's the town council shall, but it really means the Water Commission shall. But we cannot incur any debt without obviously the approval of the town council. But we are, that was one of our goals, right?
We have a few.
We have a few things to clean up.
Um, one, so I think Eugenie mentioned, when was the last time the Water Commission took on a project?
Actually, the Water Commission was created in like the year two thousand or something. And sure, the answer is, I don't think there has been. We did a. Construction project, putting a, a, a line connected between systems. As an emergency mechanism. It wasn't a billion dollars.
Yeah, and we did, we went to Wyoming River.
But even that wasn't, it wasn't that expensive. Actually, to go on to the highway, we did directional drilling, but the only reason that went forward was we ended up with. An incredible coincidence where the equipment was nearby. And we weren't paying to disassemble equipment and move it to Tolland and do this small job. And then send it to where it was gonna go. It was being used to drill from our system in River Park to Wellington to uh satisfying their. And so we, uh, Birmingham Utilities at the time, now Connecticut Water owns that water system. Or it was drilled underneath the river, underneath the railroad surface over by the condo complex.
So I agree the answer is no, but um, I think the commission is a management body, so we would have. So you'd receive, do everything, and that'd be possible, so.
Yeah.
We would be bored sitting atop CWC, so I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's an issue that we have in another project that pays. Cause we're gonna have professionals and engineers doing it, we'll have meetings.
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're one for a group of volunteers in the county.
No, your condition, your condition, and I'm not talking about myself, your condition has a lot of talents and a lot of experience.
Yeah.
However, uh, we're not in this state, we're working for.
Right. Um, just a couple more now. I think, so Lucy, you mentioned some. You mentioned to the, the, be more staff, that means the council ready to take on and hire more staff to be able to provide. This project and support it. And the customers, I said it in December, asked the question, are we gonna do or not? Are we gonna send out surveys to people that can't even run it or to hook up, or don't wanna hook up? Or may wanna hook up, right? So I mean, I think we need to include, especially the people in the vineyards. I mean, they're stakeholders too. Are we gonna do something like that, that we, how plan to do?
Well, the advocates for the project herself were doing that already.
I haven't seen that.
I think that was after the grant, this is about the grant.
These are questions, though, that we can ask Sammy. No, and if I make a decision, I wanna be able to get all the information.
The grant is just to find out what funding we can get. And at that point, we run this side.
It's not great.
Okay, it's forgiveness, whatever, well, at that point, once we find out what that rate is, then we decide if we're gonna move forward with the project or not. This is just the step one, do we apply for the, the, the state revolving fund grant at that point? After we get the funding and we know what we have to have, then we decide if we're gonna move forward. This is just step one, find out what the, what we can get when we apply for the state revolving, the clean drink, clean drinking water state revolving fund.
And I think I have the right to ask my questions and get answers, it's a lot of money, a lot of people let's speak. In fact, he stood on a step two that we're in. And I just wanna understand as we go through each process, because as you're seeing, it's in the emails of people that are in the vineyards that are concerned. So they're part of this conversation as well.
Um, this is what you're called by, Ms. Mer.
So at this point with the water fund, um, you guys would probably, from what that was saying, would be the one. Actually, I believe I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. The, the grant, as you had mentioned, would come from the Tolland Water Company, the Tolland Water Company is putting a grant.
And manage it. And, and that's where, you know, Leslie and I talked today, the, the other piece about this, and we're talking about additional staff. It's a lot of work with, like Buy American. We did a small Buy American project, the capital loan project, that was the Obama money. And we had to actually hire an engineer firm because they had to validate every piece of pipe and nut and screw was Buy American. And we had to get the, all the invoices, and it was a very, that piece was very technical. So the strings that come with it sometime are gonna cost you more money or more time, so.
But that's how close what we find out what our funding is, correct?
I think we have included in the pot, we have to assume that that's gonna be a cost, and we aren't physical, but let's go back. So by the way, it would be a little bit longer, I don't know.
Yeah, when, when you put the, when the application put in, and Craig, maybe jump in here if you feel necessary. But when the application is put in, it would not only be for, let's say if you went and decided option two was the way you wanted to go. It would not be only, only be the thirteen point six million, but we would also have to have some sort of other estimated cost, correct? Craig, regarding the, the pump, the land acquisition, everything else that would need to make the entire project work.
We have included a contingency there, uh, but certainly a, a land acquisition for a location of a pump station. Uh, i- is something that we do need to consider. Now, just sitting back and listening to the conversation back and forth, uh, I happen, I do agree with Representative Nucio. That uh, this, you know, the application can go in for the option that this body decides. Um, concurrent, concurrent with that, or after, immediately afterward, we can work with the town to poll the neighborhood. To, to uh establish a level of interest. Um, with, and that's something that, that myself and Representative Nucio and Lisa had talked about early. And, and, and what we, what we could help and assist the town in doing. So that would be a necessary step in, in the decision process to accept or decline any, any funds that come to you. If, if it's just a dozen people of the, um, I forget how many people are within, are within the uh, the subdivision itself. Then may, perhaps the town says, well, you know, that's just, we're not gonna get enough benefit for the cost. Um, so it, I mean, that, those are, those are decisions that the, the town council will make to decide. But I think getting a, getting a feel for the pulse of that, of that neighborhood, that subdivision, is a, is a critical next step to be.
And that's, that, that's, that is regardless of the grant, correct? Like, we would put the grant, at that point, then we get no interest, we get a loan forgiveness rate, we can walk away a hundred percent, correct?
The way, the way that we've proposed uh questions around a poll like this is, we present the cost in its entirety. And if, if we were to choose option two, we would say the entire cost is thirteen million dollars. Um, there is a po, po, there is the potential for the town to receive a grant in the form of fifty percent of that cost. And would reduce the individual's cost by X, uh, making it Y. Would, would at this point, you be interested in participating in this project and connecting to the, the proposed water maintenance? Um, the third question we asked Santiago, it's, oh, have you experienced any, um, any quantity or quality issues in your well that you are aware of? And that, that begins to help to paint the picture of, of just what the interest is in the neighborhood. And what, what the types of contamination they may, they may be experiencing.
So that would all occur, again, when we're at the point of making the decision to actually go forward with the project or not. Post figuring out what the forgiveness portion of the state revolving fund would be.
Uh, it, it can be sequential or it can be concurrent. Uh, we, there's no reason we couldn't initiate a questionnaire like that, uh, now, we could certainly do that.
Thank you, Frank, I just follow through.
Uh, Craig, just, just so I'm clear, I thought Lori from the Department of Public Health kept telling us not to call it a grant. Am I incorrect, or am I thinking of something else?
No, you, you, you are right, um, and, and I, I guess I need to chastise myself here, because she told us that together. It is a, a subsidy, I think we're allowed to call it, but in effect, it's the same thing. It's basically, it's basically an offset to what the cost, uh, the, the cost of repayment of the loan in its entirety is.
Actually, I believe, Craig, they're calling it loan forgiveness, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
They're, she was calling it loan forgiveness.
We, yeah, then we should call it that for the purposes of minutes of this meeting.
Does anybody know the timing, or you get the application in by the thirty-first of March, one of the response times?
So typically, they would put out what they call an intended use plan. The intended use plan is a list of all the projects that, that have been accepted. Uh, for uh, the subsequent years' construction, uh, construction timeframe. So if this, if this project were selected, um, we would be asked whether or not we want to include it. Um, and we would say yes or no. If we say no, it goes back in for consideration for the following year. If we say yes, then the clock starts ticking.
And how soon do we have to turn around to accept that award?
Uh, I'm not certain on that timeframe, Lisa. Um, we could certainly, we could certainly find out, but just, just because you are identified as an acceptable project does not mean that you need to accept the, the funding as proposed.
I guess they have a public hearing once they put the list together, and then there's, there's like thirty, for this, thirty days for that.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, Bev, a lot of that stuff is, is uh by statute, the timing, you know, so it's thirty days to this, then next thirty days. So that you do have periods for public comment.
And they're saying typically the fall of each year is when they, you figure out whether they're gonna fund you or not.
Yeah. But that, but the intended use plan comes out in, I believe, it's, it's end of July, beginning of August-ish.
Council approved fifty thousand dollars for CWC prior to today. Did that include the application work?
Yes. Right, Craig? So I think the portion that you've done so far is probably around twenty, twenty-five thousand. And then to finish, or does that include the application?
The, the proposal that, that we put together includes filling out the application. The, the proposal that, that we put together includes filling out the application as well. So, and, you know, admittedly, filling out the application is, is, you know, the lion's share of the work was in preparing this, this study that Santiago presented earlier. The, the application itself is, is, is not that arduous. It's, it's fairly straightforward. It's, it's accounting for all of the points that we may gather up and making sure that we've got an appropriate estimate in there for consideration by the department.
Good. Are you done, Ms. Nucio?
I'm good, no.
Okay, Ms. Mary.
So we're considering applying for loan forgiveness. I think part of that thought process has to include how to pay for the part that doesn't get forgiven. Who pays for that, though?
That, may I?
Please do this.
Not me personally. As I started out the meeting this evening with a little bit of an overview, the Water Commission regulations would require a lien placed against each property along the route.
An assessment.
Right, an assessment, but the assessment has a lien. Right, there's an assessment against the, I call it, sorry. But so.
For, for the purposes of this conversation, an assessment means a sum of money that is charged to each property?
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if the regulations would mandate everyone along that way. I don't think it has that allowance to do that, does it?
The pipe is in the ground in full property, there's an assessment.
Right.
But to mandate.
They're not mandated to recover.
Or mandated to pay the assessment.
That's one of the problems.
Right, so they.
This water system has had for decades because there's a pipe in the ground that has never been connected to the properties and the money's still owed, but it's, there's no way, there's no recourse.
So the, the problem we would have is if citizens along that route, each person would be proportionately assessed their share of, of the, the project that wasn't funded by loan forgiveness. And if we didn't receive any other grants that might be out there in addition, then the property would be assessed for that. Now, the problem comes in, that would be a problem for me to have to deal with, is if all those properties did not sign on and connect, then I have a problem with the cash flow for the project. Because the loan has to be repaid. And if I don't have sufficient connection fees or connection payments for the assessments coming in, then that, that delta is going to have to be paid somehow. And that's the problem we would have in determining how that's going to be paid. Would the town council have to front the money and, and then hopefully be repaid someday, which, you know, there, there are certain situations now where it, it hasn't been repaid. And I'm not sure how you recouped the debt because I wasn't here.
Well, the cash flow with the water system is used.
That's what I thought.
To pay for those who haven't paid. I'll throw in one more wrinkle, but then we'll go back to the original reasons for the meeting. We can't make any of these decisions until we go, because we're not just applying for a grant, we're applying for a loan and a grant. And it's not going to cost us anything to apply. But once they say we're going to lend you thirteen million dollars, we're going to give you forgiveness of this much, we have to go through all these processes. But I think we can't make any decisions unless we apply. The comment I was going to make that's going to money your waters is the Water Commission's relationship to town. We are the town, we own, we're no separate entity. The thing that separates us is our funds, because we're an enterprise fund. So there has never been co-maining of Water Commission funds and town funds. We pay for everything ourselves. There's some chargebacks back and forth. But on a project like this, the Water Commission is going on the application. This is town money, so there's going to be co-maining with someone else.
So that, that needs to be understood upfront.
Well, yeah, upfront, because you've got to pay the contractor.
Well, yeah.
And, and you hold the assessments, or we hold the assessments, if only half the people look up. And loan payments do, that's not going to come out of Water Commission, it's the current water customer's pockets, that's coming out of town pockets. So you're going to have to understand that our name's on this application. The money's not coming from us.
So.
Until when we get the loan and get the approval and it's all in the bank and everything else, we can continue that. Our monies are not co-mained at all. Never happened, we're not part of the budget, we're a home enterprise.
Because on page nine, forty-eight dash six, says that borrowing to expand water service will be repaid entirely from water rates, fees, or assessments. It's actually repeated on level two.
Here?
Yep, there you go, forty-eight six.
That's what the quote says there, correct?
So we have to go into this knowing that more funding than can be recouped from water rates, fees, or assessments would be needed. Is what I'm hearing.
But if the Water Commission does not agree to move forward with it because their operation cannot afford that, then the only alternative that I think you would have is have the town council say that they are going to support the debt without it coming from water.
If, if I might, that's why I think you've heard us say a couple of times, you really need to know with some degree of certainty, and not for sure it, but some degree of certainty, how many folks are going to sign up to get this water service? Because if you end up with the problem that we've had where it hasn't been that bad, but there are more than a handful, a significant number of these assessments that go back to the early nineteen eighties that have never been paid. On the other side, I do know of a family where it was paid, but they didn't want to be hooked up because they were cranking about it. And so you don't know, but, so there, there's the assessments dealt with. They derive no benefit, they have a well, and they're happy. And they are friends. But please, you need to get the prospective customers interested enough to say yes, if they can't say that in large numbers, it isn't worth it to provide a working class.
So, I, thank you. I, I have to say, I'm, I'm a little confused. Because when we were talking about this in December, there, we were talking about a grant, not a loan with loan forgiveness. And we were talking, there was mention of this being covered, like getting funding to cover a hundred percent of it. And now we're talking about a loan with maybe fifty percent loan forgiveness. Why is that? Why does the financing keep changing?
I think it's how people interpret things in these terms. I, fortunately, didn't come from Tom and I, but I know people in the Department of Public Health that are sometimes overly enthusiastic in promoting the program. And there could be more generous loan forgiveness, I guess is the way I'll put it. But be careful what you bet on is, is what I think Tom and I are taught. I would just don't know until we make the application. Bottom line is, we don't know anything until we make the application.
So the more points that you get through the application process, the.
The increase in likelihood.
Low, increases the likelihood of the project being approved, but also provides for a higher.
Exactly.
Loan forgiveness amount. And we won't know that until they go through the process.
Lisa, this is Craig. I, I don't know that that's true. I think the point process on its face dictates where you, where this project would compare to other projects submitted. Not necessarily the level of loan forgiveness. The way that, the, the way that I'm understanding the infrastructure money to be administered through the SRF program is fifty percent loan forgiveness, fifty percent loan. So it's, it, it, that number will not change. If there's other funding mechanisms available, I'm not aware of them. So I would, I would go with the fifty percent loan forgiveness as part of this infrastructure money to fund this project.
Thank you for clarifying that because I misunderstood it.
That's okay.
That was very helpful. So, you know, one of the other options here would to also see if there's any way that there's any other federal, state resources out there or any other legislation that may be forthcoming that could possibly help with the other fifty percent. But I won't know about that until anything happens.
Fred, if you didn't know, then. Okay, so then I have a question about loan scoring. I'm not sure if Leslie or Craig is best to answer, but could the fact that the town council is, is not considering a resolution that would guarantee the remaining fifty percent impact our loans for, our, I'm sorry, our applications for?
I have no personal knowledge of how the applications are rated. Sorry, through you, Mr. Vice Chair. I don't know how the applications are rated and whether that would be a contributing factor to the loan not being granted.
So.
Because I'm not aware of, I'm sorry, just to try and answer that question. I'm not aware of any scoring criteria in this original point. This is eligibility application that's being filed now upon a decision to proceed with a project. There's a full financial application, a loan application that's filed, and that's where the full documentation on the funding would be provided. This is really just defining the broad scope of the project and the broad estimate of the budget so they can determine what they can fit in and what priority would have for this year.
If we were to proceed with recommending to the Water Commission to apply for the loan, what would the dollar value be that we would be applying for? I mean, you, you gave us an estimate for two different options, but there's a bunch of, you know, it doesn't include a diversion permit, it doesn't include water purchase agreements. You, you, are we, would we just be applying for the dollar values you presented? Or would we need to apply for a larger amount?
This is Santiago. Maybe I can comment on that. What the application, the initial application is for is to tell the DPH the overall project costs that will later be financed through them. So the amount that we outlining the options is what would be requested in the application. Not anything that later becomes ineligible in their eyes as to, for instance, a diversion permit or administrative costs. None of those items would be reversible later. So those costs wouldn't be included in the, in, in the application number that you would give them.
The town's responsibility is more than fifty percent. If it, you know, if we, if the diversion permit is not eligible for loan forgiveness if administration costs are on.
Once we put the application into place, I think, I think the motion may be, because I think you need to say in the motion which option you want approved. And I would think maybe if you don't want to come back and meet again, you put a not to exceed. So we know of thirteen point some odd million dollars. There's going to be, there's going to be other stuff, and, and that includes, I know it includes a contingency. But I would suggest go to fifteen or something like that and say, option, option one, not to exceed fifteen million dollars. And that way, if costs do come up.
You don't like, you don't like sitting with us?
No, I don't. No, just, this might be the place where you also put money in for construction administration as well. Because you can't do the construction without that oversight.
And they just pay for that, that other grant thing, and then they pay for.
Okay, this, this proposal is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth.
That's the, that's my, my question.
Of project management, this is a contingency over there.
I know, but it's.
There's too many another contingency and I have already half a million dollars of engineering. So we do have some level of project management. But if we have to go through a new diversion permit, the bus is under fifty thousand dollars of engineering because the last time we did the diversion. You don't spend a few years. So I have to go through, and not to exceed, yes.
Okay.
But, but do you want to get this application done?
And I would work with Leslie and Craig just to make sure we understand what his numbers mean, that were clear, but number's not in there. Or if we have to purchase land for the pump station, by council, which is a pretty hefty amount. And then probably some other contingency on our side. Borrowing costs if you have to.
If I could jump in here quick, Bev? So the initial application, as Dave, as David suggested, is, is an eligibility application. And the, the costs in there are rough, the, the ones that are, we provided through this, this analysis. We will have opportunity, if the project gets accepted, to, to do more fine-tuned engineering and establish the cost for eligibility. And ultimately, it'll be adjusted to actual at the end of the project, and it'll be at that fifty percent loan forgiveness, fifty percent loan. So there are more bites of the apple down the road to bring clarity and actual as-built costs to bear through this process.
But Craig, if we know upfront, we're asking the residents fifty percent, we can have an, we can have an idea in our mind about what the assessment is going to be on the property. If I was want to say five thousand, five thousand, I don't know, now we know it's seven.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely want to be conservative in that estimate there, Beverly.
So Bev, you, you were using numbers, but when Tom was talking about it, you were using numbers that were ten times what Bev was just saying in terms of assessments.
The amount of the assessments?
Yeah.
It depends on how much of the money you're forgiving. Now, Gene was coming up with a hundred thousand per home, I said it was fifty percent of the assessments, which is bad.
Oh, and also, again, I didn't have that, but when I was looking at the roots, there's more houses and property along the, it's not larger. Say true, so.
It's not a two thousand dollar thing, it's a way, it's probably a fifty thousand dollar.
Thank you for those of my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, now I'm trying to simplify this down for myself, because that's what we need, thanks. Now, with regard, Lisa, with regard to the, to the additional funding, we're looking at just this loan forgiveness program as, as it is right now. We've got a grant right that we just hired, correct? And this is something that we could possibly examine for other grants, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is something, so we're looking at worst-case scenario, possibly just using the ballpark figure that everyone's been using, fifty percent. But then maybe even reduce even more depending upon if there's other grants that are available, if there's other things that come from the state. So going off that worst-case scenario, we're realistically looking about fifty percent possibly being borne by the, by the residents after the, after the project. Is that about ballpark, correct, ballpark figure?
Fifty percent being borne by people being served.
Right.
Yes.
And now I know that also there is there is in some of the things that I've read here as far as concerns from other residents and stuff is about having the town, if we say that we're going to cover it, then that gets included in like the the potential tax bill rate.
Correct.
Okay, so is this something, again, I'm just trying to figure this out. If we say if we're going forward that we find out there's going to be like seven, seven point five million, I'd say if you go fifteen million, seven point five million is what we have to bear. Is this something that would then could be then put forward to referendum for people to decide on, so that the entire town, if it's going to be something that we decided we want to go forward with, but we know that there's not going to be enough for like not enough overwhelming interest to really defray it, that we're going to be have to bear some costs. Once we get that figured out, we could then say, these are the costs that the the residents in this area are willing to bear. These are the ones they're going to be signing on. So using that, you know, using that number out of a potential hundred sixteen people that we have up in the vineyards plus the other ones, the other seventy five, using the one that would go down on talent stage. So we're talking about a potential additional two hundred people. Potentially signing out of this, out of the water project. So say if we only get a hundred. Or say if we only get fifty, you know, whatever is, we can use that as a basis to then go forward to the town and say, look, this is a, this is a potential. We're looking to possibly take this forward as, because I'm assuming that we would have to bond for this if we were going to pay for it, if we're going to pay for it. Or I mean, I'm looking at your financial expertise. I mean, G A J O A award winner. I mean, you know.
G F O A.
Yeah, G F O A. So, you know, help me if you want, you might want to help finance. Yeah.
With with this, we are applying for a loan. Okay, so the loan, I think.
Twenty years, I bet.
Is it twenty years, seven years?
Twenty percent, I think, or whatever the rate is at this point.
I need to get our bottom counsel clarification because I'm trying to remember the last time I looked into this. I'm not sure if this type of loan under our charter has to go to referendum or not. I know if we were issuing bonds, there's certain debt that definitely has to go to Cal Lloyd referendum, but we both. I have, I made a note for myself tonight to double check with our bond attorney, because he manages out the other types of debt that we issue as well, leases, things like that. Just to see if this would have to go to Cal Lloyd referendum. Because and let's remember what I told you last time we went through this. Did you, Tom?
Yeah.
It was so long ago.
Do the referendum, I remember. We have something in the capital budget.
Well, that one, when I put it in the capital budget, it ate up some of the less than five percent also. So that that's under there. So I just need to confirm that. But there is a chance that it may have to go to referendum. If that's the case, then we have to start looking at questions and everything else. And it wouldn't make it from the
Me.
Tax referendum, I mean, the budget referendum that would have to go with.
And then, um, of course, just came in and went right up, and then think about it again for a second. Oh, for the, I mean, I think that that it was a great point. I think that we really, you know, in moving forward, we definitely have to put out this about out the survey for the people within the vineyards that would be interested. I mean, that's as well as anyone along whatever route that we decide, because I think that's, I mean, that's a necessity. We have to do that. But I think another thing also, I know that people are concerned, as you and Aubrey already mentioned as well, that if, you know, not necessarily if we do it for this one time, that we have to do it for everyone else. That's something that we consider on a on a ba- on a regular basis. But the thing is that no matter what it is, we're a town government. We have obligations for our residents as well. And that's something where if this is something comes back and, you know, again, going to the worst case scenario, that the DEP ruling or or studies come back and says, this is something that the town is responsible for, we're going to be responsible for no matter what. I mean, across is no matter where it is, because that's, and that's one thing where, you know, we have to, so even if it may not, even if we do it for the vineyard this time, if there's people down here that have the same thing happen, the DEP study's already come out. And so I'm a sad, I'm pretty much assuming that we're going to have to be on the hook for that anyway. So we're either going to be doing it on our own or we're going to be doing it through an order or through a lawsuit, which, again, could be significant because, you know, and and take a lot of time and a lot of money on that litigation aspect of it, just like when we were dealing with the whole crumbling foundations in the first few months. You know, that we thought it was just a small isolated area, and then it blew over to the entire town. You know, I'm hoping that it doesn't leave with that, but at the same time, you know, that we have to sort of take a look at that and and start planning accordingly. So, anyway. Yes.
All right, Mr. Chair, follow line.
So so which is from me? I don't know what you're thinking about. So the DEP study is supposed to be out by the, hopefully, hopefully, fingers crossed, not holding my breath, by the end of the month. If that comes out and it says the town is, you know, it's sixty percent road contamination, forty percent water softening, seventy, thirty, twenty, eighty, fifty, fifty, however you want to do it. At that point, from the water commission's perspective, the town has liability for the road salt portion of it. So would that play into the the factor here? Again, I'm all of, we should, like you, Tom, we need to just put the application in and see what it comes back at. At that point, if he comes back and says it's a fifty fifty responsibility with water softeners and the road salt, then fifty percent of that debt has to be taken on by the town, or the town can be sued to fully help that by every person who has water contamination, correct?
It could. I mean, it also depends, and I'm not familiar enough with the area. Are there any statements in there as well?
There's not.
Oh, okay.
Hundred percent town roads. But I'm selling a quarter. Hundred percent town roads. So that would be our responsibility a hundred percent, correct?
If they if they mandate us to.
Remediate?
Remediate, sure.
Right. So at that point, if it comes back any fraction or however you want to look at it, then the town is on the hook for that piece anyway. So again, I'm all for moving the application forward and seeing what we get for funding and then dealing with the next steps after that. So from the water commission's perspective, though, I remember, Beth, at one point you and I were talking, and since they, the water commission is now aware of this contamination, you guys have a much more active role in this because of your drinking water, correct? And that's something what we, you guys also.
Well, we have an interest. We're not environmental remediation.
Right.
Program individuals. We provide water. And we provide it to any party that requests it. It doesn't matter whether it's because a well is contaminated or not. But I'm a little surprised about looking for words. Discussions now about the town as liability of because of those roads salts. The road salts or the increased use of road salts came about because of state governments in many places wanted to stop using sand because actually, unfortunately, it was an environmental issue. Some were saying, well, the sand ends up in the bottoms of streams and brooks and it kills the fish alive. So you shouldn't use sand. States, all of them in coal-fired lines started using road salts, and all of a sudden it's the culprit, yet when I moved to Tolland in nineteen seventy seven, there was a proliferation of water softeners in houses all over the place. And people, actually where we first lived, were using water softeners to get rid of iron or manganese. You could do that. Except it doesn't do it very well. It don't make a lot of salt. Salt mine where you should be using an air removal system, which doesn't do that. And you'd look a lot better.
I agree.
But they cost more. And so you've got to wrestle with all this. And certainly, that's why I was asking about study work, who's visited customer premises and all this other kind of stuff. Yes, the town needs to understand, and it needs to make good decisions. But I guess with these words, I'm saying, you need to be careful because you don't know what problem you're solving. The salt from the water softeners or the salt from the roads. Salt from the roads is, the increased use of salt is probably less than ten years old. The water softeners, as I said, when I moved here, there were a lot of them, and a lot of houses that existed, and that's nineteen seventy seven.
I think the deep study is, it's hopefully, hopefully, under its grasp, going to actually.
Well, I hope it does. I hope it does, but we have to make decisions, or you have to make decisions. And then we'll make decisions.
Right.
Based on not so public information.
Right. And the deep study, hopefully, like I said, will be out by the end of the month, but we don't know that for sure. So and if the grant application is due at the end of the month also, I think abundance of question would be to apply for the grant, see what it comes back at, and then make those decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. You should check on the.
Question, the draft resolution cannot be amended in any such way?
We can amend it. That was my question too, because we talked about changing some of the the language. This is probably your question.
No, probably not, but go ahead.
Right. So I wasn't sure, but I'm reading the resolution now, and what I was saying is we don't need to change that language. That's just authorized in the the loan application. And I think they can, you can probably do whatever you can, fill the application out, and you can just wait for it. I think there's a lot of that. So I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Really, it sounds like we're going to do the survey to residents in the vineyard. Is there any way that you could see that in the resolution that we're doing as ongoing as we're applying to a grant? So is that something we could add in there? So residents that are concerned, at least they know, we're also doing something.
Yeah, so so language saying that we're going to survey the affected areas and people.
Yeah, it sounds like some people said you can do it as you're applying for the grant. I'm the grant loan. I don't know, I, it's.
Stakes, man. Excellent, you know, it's all official.
So I just, for me, I think I would, like I've said, like saving page and note of it for just something that shows the help of people with water actions and also showing that we are concerned about residents. And then futures, that talking about, I know it's not part of this long term plan of what's happens with other households. I don't know, just put it up there.
Has anybody objected to that? We can actually amend the resolution if we got.
And then your board are good in another community, prepare a document like I think you're talking about, and they could probably give us help with that, and they set that out, but they had some numbers that had to give to people that year.
Who would, sorry to interrupt you about that. I'm sorry if I missed it. Who would work on the survey? Would it be the commission or the gentleman up here that have been working on the study?
I think we need some help, Craig, right? Or you've done that in a previous community? I have a copy of one.
We could, we could certainly help with with the wording of it and and helping to put it together, but we would need the town to to reach out to the folks and solicit the information itself. Again, it's not a Connecticut Water Company area. So the town would need to do the reach out, but we don't have, as they are not customers of ours, we don't have contact information for those folks either.
So what I could, the only things I'm going to make is we, so far, we don't know at the ground, loan, a fifty percent, whatever it is. Until then, I don't think so we can. So why, why don't we wait and let them do the job process as soon as, as soon as possible. And keep moving. That's the only thing I can say right now, because committed water took like, what, six, three weeks to do the study and we had the zero point. We're just wasting all the time later. Then we got a bit. So why wait, why can't we move with the process? And then take a step and for it, meeting as soon as possible, after we get the answer. And that's the only thing I can think of. Rather than going back and forth. Thank you.
I was, I'm sorry. Did you mean still vote tonight or not vote tonight?
I would just throw it away. It's waste of time. It's totally waste of time. Because they are sitting and they are there. And then do the job. Start the process of loans, plants, a fifty percent. Until then, there's nothing, why, there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can say. Nothing we can say to the town. People have, you know what, you got library for five thousand, ten thousand, fifty thousand. We cannot say. So until we get the answer, we are depending on the ground, loan, a hundred percent loan or fifty percent loan. There's nothing we can say or nothing we can do. And then we, as soon as we have the answer, then we can talk. And this way now, and to the people there, you know what, your library for five thousand, not thirty one thousand, not thirty six thousand. And we start working in the future, that's like trying to hook up from point eight to twenty. As Lisa said, we are library for for town and not only that vineyard. So like to start for the future, start thinking about the future. And I think that's, as we said, we are just life up in here, that's all I can say, because it's just a gossip. Until we have the real answer, until we have the fact. Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
But that's okay. They're looking, they're looking tomorrow.
Yeah, I was, I'm looking at the minutes from December twenty eighth, and on that night, we did vote in favor of a resolution authorizing up to fifty thousand dollars from Harpud to fund the engineering cost analysis study, which is what's included in the act tonight, and application to the drinking water state revolving fund. That motion passed unanimously.
So, so then it's just a matter of us deciding, is it going to be option one or option two? Is that, that's really all we're going to be, that we have to decide tonight then?
Okay.
And we cannot.
Again?
We cannot. Option one, option two, we cannot, because we don't know what we have in the place. Well, we don't know, we paid for the money, we don't, you know.
It's through you, Mr. Chair, that it's, but I think it's, we need to be able to decide that before we can even put in character for the horse, where we need to decide before we can have them go forward with with.
If I'm getting, if I'm getting the gun, I'll have to go for the more house and then less.
Okay. I mean, and that's, I mean, so that's really what we have.
We don't know, you're getting the gun or may get the loan. About what we are getting, what we are getting, what we have to handle.
We're saying exactly.
If I have the one, I allow it to the whole time.
So, I think, but sometimes you've talked about other grants, and sometimes you lay down foundation for future grants by doing resolutions, or they they want the documentation, and then you have it. That's something that may be helpful, at least choosing the option. And then if Leslie's in search of, you know, down the road, then it's kind of late. We don't have to come back right away, but they cannot, I mean, the water commission can't incur debt without a resolution from. So we get to that point, we might.
So, so so my, Mr. Chair, my my suggestion would be along the lines of whatever, as your check said, is add on in the last, in the draft resolution, the last statement, saying the town council will also direct.
The last statement, saying the town council will also direct a survey sent to all interested parties. Uh, uh, for potential water hookups.
Along the proposed group that we decided.
Along, along, along the proposed group, as I said, thank you. So, so, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna ask the, the water commission if they had a recommendation between the two options.
Before we answer that question, um, it's real hard for us to agree though. Before you answer that though, the way I read this resolution, do you need directions from the town council on which option to choose when you, when you fill the application? You do, okay.
There has to be a pick.
Okay, this is the way I read this and says we're authorizing you to apply, but it doesn't say, it, it doesn't specify. Uh, as to how or what the application is gonna be like, how much money we can get approved, it doesn't specify.
You can say, well. We don't have to pick, but you're gonna have to put a number in there and the number's gonna go with it.
Up to fifteen million would cover both options.
Yeah, and. You know, uh, someone has to pick.
I mean, we need to put it up to more, or we're gonna pick the more expensive options. We need it if it, if it ends up with cheaper options, better than.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I guess, I guess my question is, because I've been under the assumption the whole time that we were gonna have to choose one or the other. That because this one has this benefit, this one has this benefit, this one may score higher, so it may get, you know, it may be put on higher preference. So if it's just going forward and picking a number and then once we get approved for that number, does it really matter which one we pick right now? I mean, because that's.
Craig, what happened? Craig.
Yes, it, it does matter because the scoring will be different for each alternative and, and you'll be submitting. The construction estimate that was developed as part of this initial study, so. You, you can apply for either project, but you, but you should select what you want to include in the eligibility application at this point.
Application has the scoring right on it, so, so you guys are better than us, so if, if it's on like a two hundred point basis. And one of them is eighty five points and one is ninety five points, then you guys should be able to tell us what the better net cost is. I mean, the point, look at the application pages of points, so.
Yeah, the, the piece we can't answer is how much of a difference. Ten additional points make relative to the other projects being submitted across the state because we don't know that, so, so it's hard to. Give a useful opinion on whether that additional point scoring would, would make a difference or not in the selection.
Can I make a quick comment uh from Connecticut Water? Um, as, as far as the application goes and as far as the ranking point selection in the application. What really matters is the documented issues that the residents have with their potable water. So the more proven issues and documented issues they have, the higher the application is gonna rank. And I, actually, I'm looking at the application right here, I have it in front of me. And it's based on different criteria of levels of contamination for different contaminants. So when a, when you reach out to your residents for interest in the project. Part of that reach out is, should, should be to get. Information from them as to what issues they have documented with their private wells. Because that, that's gonna. Move the application higher with respect to, to the other towns that are applying for, for funding. I hope that helps in some way, but I don't know if I answered your question particularly.
So, yes, so if you look at the, the list of all the homes that have contaminated wells. My, my reason for going for option two is there are contaminated wells on Buckcap and Slater. There's a couple, there's not a lot, there's a couple of homes on there, but going down the seventy four option, we pick up Ivy Woods. And Ivy Woods, we know, has documented issues with water and it's apartment complex. So to me, that is a captive area, it's an apartment complex, they have a need for clean water. And it is gonna give us more points on the value system because it's an apartment complex.
And state police.
The state police also does, like the state, the state of Connecticut police department.
More development down there.
There is, right, there's more development down there and they do have a lot of documented issues with water quality at the, um, barracks. Which is on the state facility on seventy four.
They, they just, it's all.
What happens if, uh, they get more houses, you don't know.
Right, if you develop off of the open land that's on seventy four, you have, and that's not, no, that's not supposed to be one of our driving factors. Is whether or not this enhances, this enhances um investment or economic development. But you're right, there's a lot more open land and off of the seventy four parcel that has the potential for being developed. But one of the reasons that it hasn't been looked at for development is because there's no infrastructure there. So this does help that from a long-term visionary perspective. Whether or not that land gets purchased, any development gets put on there. That is something to consider, but it should not be one of our deciding factors in this as an economic development perspective. But Ivy Woods as an apartment complex and the um, the police barracks. Is a whole other addition onto that.
Let's say, let's say, let's see what our options is and then go for the larger. Yeah. It's thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, whatever it is, but let's see what's our options are.
I'm for option two myself before taking votes. And that's, that's my reasoning with Ivy Woods, the police and um. And the, um, going all the way up there, up on the cap there. There's a significant amount of homes and also good opportunity up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, at this point, then I think that, uh, at, at your discretion, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. That I would, uh, ask that possibly to a straw poll to see what people are leaning to, so at least we can start discussing. Because we've got, uh, Mr. Khan has said, we, I think we're in our third circle around and we're still at that same point where. At least this way we can sort of start focusing in on what do we do? Because if we're gonna agree on option two at this one or if we're gonna agree on option one. Then at least we can say, okay, there, there's directions, we know what we need to do.
So are you saying not should say?
No, I'm saying, I'm no, no, I'm saying, I'm saying that we should do, I'm asking for a straw poll at this point. To see where everyone's standing.
We have to go out to know which.
Yes, sir, because I mean, we, we have six of us here that are gonna be, uh, yes, six, six of us are gonna be voting. And so with a three-three split, then that's one thing if we have, you know, or otherwise we could at least know. And then hear each other out to see before we take a final vote, if we need even a final vote at this point. On uh, on which option, which I think we do. Okay, so now what we're looking at is we're looking at changing the language on this resolution. And we're also looking at uh, deciding which option we want to act with. Or at least providing them the rationale, I think we need to change the language, or we can say this, that, at least say any uh, any direction as far as what they're telling us is. Right, so we can have, we can do a straw polls, uh, as far as option one or option two. Um, Mr. Nuccio recommended option two, so we can go around the table and if you're in, remove that.
Let me do this and imagine this.
John, I just wanna say straw poll is not fine.
Right. Yeah, oh yeah, just, that, I think that's gonna give us an idea about how we are, how we handle this. So, uh, option two, is, are you in agreement with using option two as presented, uh, calling?
How many houses again with the option two plus it includes can use the state police?
It was.
Hundred and eighty, and then I think someone mentioned earlier that you get more points because they, Ivy have, you have water issues, alright, yes, they do, and that.
Yeah, I think two, to help more people.
Number two?
Yes, sir, number two. Number two for me, so I see, yeah, it's a straw poll. So now we have to figure out the language on the resolution. If, if we're doing, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, I think that, again, leaving the resolution as it is. But then with the vote, we could say that we can take a vote as far as, you know, an actual vote. So we could all vote on option two as an official vote for which, which, uh, which way we're going. But leaving the res- uh, resolution as it is so that we don't have to specifically include inside there the language. But they've got the direction of we're going forward with option two as part of this resolution.
Okay, I wanna include the survey.
Uh, yes, including the survey, yes. So we need, we need to get that language in there that we already heard on, right? Right, so, um, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I do understand the need for the survey. My concern is if you start a survey before you get the results of the application. You may be telling citizens that. Right now it's a fifty fifty split, but say it comes back that somehow we get eighty twenty. That they pay eighty and we pay twenty, or we pay eighty and they play eight twenty. It's, you know, there's gonna be all different options that will come out in a, in a survey and I don't think you wanna give. Different scenarios, or maybe you do. Um, so doing a survey right now, I don't know if that will give us. The real benefits of it.
I think it will give us a benefit, it'll tell us what residents either want it or don't, it doesn't have to be a complicated thing, it just can be a few questions. I mean, I think. Talk about it, I mean, I don't see, I need to help stamp them or write them, I certainly will help the town do that. I mean, I just think that for me, it's very important that. We're hearing all that residents in that area.
And the water company is saying that understanding the need from individual households. Will help with our score, so maybe we need to talk, maybe we need to anticipate that we're gonna be talking to these residents more than once.
Right.
Right, because you know, there's nothing that stops us from talking to them twice or more, so. Maybe we need to do a survey now to get a better idea of need rather than appetite to purchase and or to connect.
Alright, well, I like the idea of need. Um, not that it matters because you aren't the ones who are gonna decide this, but, but, um. You know, the idea of need absolutely. Just if participation, if you start throwing numbers out there, it may scare some people off as to not.
So, but we wanna tell people the truth though.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Just don't know the truth yet, so we don't know so we have a lovely.
But I think, I, I think that going along what, what, what's been discussed so far is putting out, you know, just an initial, very general one, and again, working along with the, uh, with all the players involved here. Because there's much more people that have much more experience than any of us here. Is putting out the initial one saying, are you currently experiencing water issues? Um, so, and how are you having issues with potable water, something like that, and then say, if given the opportunity to, uh, to participate. In, you know, the water system, would you be interested in, not even discussing numbers at that point, just showing a general interest. Because I, you know, I think that all the people that are interested in possibly being involved in it. Are gonna be looking at this, gonna be watching it, and gonna be talking about it anyway. So I think it's just that way it gives us something more firm numbers moving forward. And then after we get that, then we, once you get that, uh, the actual numbers, we, uh, then we can figure it out. That you're looking at a maximum of this much. And then if we get even more grants or something like that through our outstanding grant writer, then, uh, then that could be even less. So I think that's something that we, you know, I agree that a multi-phased attack on this is something that we're probably gonna have to do. Just to, you know, because it may, may down the line, you may have more people buying in if they're saying, hey, it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars or it's gonna be ten thousand dollars, you know, or much. You can, you can have more people, I mean, I know, I can jump in.
Yeah, I agree, just a simple question, like you're saying, if we find out the amounts, it sounds like it has to go to a public hearing anyways.
Correct.
I think, um, we should make sure that, um, any outreach to residents includes a request for information. That the Connecticut water people might need or be able to use as, yeah, um.
Sorry, we're back.
Yeah, um, just, if, I think it sounds like we're all with option two. I think it would be good to include that in the resolution, it's, it's not a bad ad. As well as the, if you're changing it to include the study request, um, you know, that could be as a further resolve to initiate a. A need-based survey for the people in the area.
For everyone along the proposed group to, option two.
So, uh, because I've been taking notes and so my, my suggestion would be then, of course, it scrolls. So it would be that the draft resolution would read then, that the town, Tallinn Town Council hereby resolves that. We request the Tallinn Water Commission to make application for a loan from the Department of Public Health Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSR. For the possible installation of water lines leading to, including the area known at, of, of town known as the villages. In accordance, in, I'm sorry, say it again, the vineyard, vine, yeah.
I don't wanna do the wrong here.
Yeah, so the vineyard, the vineyard, in accordance with, uh. What was it? It was, uh, option two, thank you, in accordance with option two. And to allow the Connecticut Water Company on behalf of the Tallinn Water Commission to complete the application. Further resolve that if the loan application is approved, any resulting in a potential grant award for a portion of the loan. The town council will revisit a determination as whether to proceed or not. The town council will also direct a survey of all interested parties, interested and or affected parties be conducted in accordance with this resolution. So I'll make that as a motion if I'm within agreement with it.
That sounds good, yeah.
Okay, uh, so you don't have to, I read, you just say. Second. Yeah. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote is you, Chuck.
Hi.
Mrs. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Nuccio.
Hi.
Mr. Khan.
Hi. Hi.
I mean, hi, that passes you nicely.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question? Send you the survey, not the survey, but what Connecticut Water with another town, if anyone individually wants to say, yeah, that's what I had in mind, to give us some guidance. So this is what they did for another town and they did bring down the cost, but so we're not going back and forth, but.
Yeah, it will be great.
Yes.
There's not too many of them.
Just, um, send it to me and I'll get it to you. But I do not respond at all, I'll probably send it out while you have BCC, but. You know, just don't get into a discussion between each other at Senate Constitutes meeting.
Please, no, darling, you text Mr. Jones, I mean, by the, rejoin us.
And chance, Mr. Johnson.
I was listening to the tail end of the conversation, or at least I popped on for the last hour, so. Sounds like it was a really robust conversation and thank you for, everyone for having that discussion and, uh, the resolution. From what I heard was passed unanimously, so, uh, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at nine oh nine P M.
Second.
All right, so I'm gonna do a roll call vote from here, uh, by Sheregan. Counselor Luba. Counselman Nuccio. Counselman Utechak. Counselman Murray. And Counselor Khan. All right, that is unanimous, we are adjourned, thank you everyone, have a great night and thank you for coming.